Everyone. We are ready to begin. Councilwoman McCoy asked for just one moment, so I'm just waiting for her to turn on her camera. Thank you.
I'm here. Thank you, guys. Come in. I'm here. I'm ready. Yep, I'm ready. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We're ready to begin. Madam City Clerk, are you ready?
I am ready.
Okay, thank you. Today is Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020, 5:53 PM, and we will now begin the Compton City Council meeting. Roll call.
Councilperson Chambers.
Here.
Galvane. McCoy.
Here.
Sharif.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here.
Madam Mayor.
Seating forward. Oh, go ahead. Madam City Clerk.
I'm sorry. We have a subsequent need item request from the city attorney. And we need a motion to consider.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Chambers.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. There is a subsequent need item for a closed session this evening, conference with legal counsel on existing litigation. The matter is Nikos Hetzakis versus the City of Compton Workers' Compensation Appeals Board case numbers ADJ 13701291, ADJ 9607019, ADJ 397514, and ADJ 12635091. My office this morning received a settlement demand as to these matters, requiring a response within the next 72 hours. So there was no, there was an inability to provide the 72-hour notice requirement for a notice of this hearing. But I do need to present this to council tonight so that we can respond to the settlement demand within the timeframe indicated.
Thank you, City Attorney. Okay. Do you need a roll call on this item, Madam Clerk, or with a remediation?
Yes, we need a motion on the item and then a motion to recess.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Chambers.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
And on the recess.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Chambers.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes. Mr. Sharif, making sure she's audible.
They just went to check.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, we are ready, madam. Thank you. May we have a motion to reconvene the Compton City Council meeting?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Chambers.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes. We'll now have a report out of closed session from our city attorney, Damon Brown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There was one subsequent need item approved for a closed session this evening. The matter was Niko Hetzakis versus the City of Compton. I'm sorry. Just dropped my paper. Bear with me one second, please. My apologies. Nikos Hetzakis versus City of Compton Workers' Compensation Appeals Board case numbers ADJ 13701291, ADJ 9607019, ADJ 12635091 pursuant to government code section 54956.9. There is no reportable action at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Madam City Clerk, we are ready to proceed forward to public comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our public comments are read as submitted. Our first speaker is Joyce Kelly. "Good evening. I am Joyce Kelly. Why can't the people come to council meetings? Because there is enough room to be social distance. The officials can put a table on the platform. So everyone is saying that Ajax and her husband and friends are involved with illegal marijuana shops. If anyone needs to resign, the whole lot of you corrupt idiots need to go, need only not to resign but go to jail. I wonder why Van Brown was made the emergency mayor. Was it so he can warn the illegal shops of when they will be shut down? Why does Asia Brown need more money for a bond? She and the vast array of modern-day carpetbaggers need to get the hell straight out of Compton. It won't be long before Asia Brown is going to the big house. For you inept members of the fake commission to oversee the sheriff, you better read the contract and get the hell out of Ajax's business. She is trying to throw everyone off her trail. None of you have a working relationship with the sheriff. Think. There has been unrest and violence since August 2013, when she got in office. And she has never done anything. All of a sudden, she wants to turn people against the sheriff while hiding her corruption." Our next speaker is Connie Halbig. "Have you gone out and voted today? First, I watched the town hall meeting the other night with Tana McCoy and Craig Cornwell on the bond issue. First, the residents need to vote on it. It is way past time. We took Compton back. The streets still need the infrastructure completed before we do anything. The council has no right to make these decisions for us so they can fill their pockets more. For a parking structure, this is not needed yet to waste more money. Let's just wait till after the April elections to vote on this, for many of you won't be around anymore. Second, are the sheriffs going to be out tonight to control what may be going on from outsiders again? Third, Damian Brown, what do you intend to do about Galvane? Pass it over again, or the council gets rid of him for his new black mark on our city? How many marijuana shops have you closed in the past week? None. But that's all right. We are looking for a replacement for someone that really lives here and is will, and is will do the work to close them down, including mayors. Don't worry, she will be joining Galvane soon before we vote her out of the lies she has stated. What was it she was on the other day on the front lawn? Was she preaching for forgiveness for what she has done to our city? I pray you do, I pray you do the right thing for a change and give Galvane his walking papers, not like you did before with the drunk driving. But first, have him pay back all the monies he received for a car allowance where he wasn't supposed to be driving without a license. Let us see you do the right thing tonight for a change." Our next speaker is Martha Camacho. "I think it's time for the council to finally make a decision to remove Councilman Galvane from the days after recent news of his arrest by the FBI. I don't know how many chances that he needs to get, but one more seems too, like too many at this point. This man has never taken his position seriously, and he has shown us who he is over and over again. Please remove him. He does not show up for the community. There are multiple reports of him being disrespectful and dismissive to residents, and the fact that he doesn't make an effort to show his face in council meetings is a red flag. When council meetings were in person, he was constantly on his phone. We deserve a councilperson who is actually ready to put in the work, not just trying to throw free stuff at us every now and then to win votes. Fighting at conferences, driving without a license due to a DUI, just do a Google search of his name and you'll see all you need to see. His reputation is trash. Compton deserves better. Latinos deserve better representation. It's a shame that our first and only Latino person constantly lets our community down. Please step down, Councilman Galvane. Get your life together." And our last comment comes from Robert Ray. Item number seven. "Due to the recent increase of new COVID-19 cases, it would not be safe to allow the public to gather in the council chambers." Item number eight. "These weapons are worth a lot of money. Instead of destroying them, have you considered selling them to a licensed dealer or perhaps offering them to another law enforcement agency? The council needs to demand the immediate resignation of Councilman Galvane for conduct unbecoming and elected official of the City of Compton. If he does not resign voluntarily, he needs to be removed and steps taken to fill his seat until the next scheduled election. This past week has been the highest number of new cases of COVID-19 since this pandemic began. It is imperative that everyone follow the guidelines set forth by the CDC. That is, wear a face mask, practice social distancing, and use hand sanitizer often. All city-owned parks should be closed to the public, and churches need to stop holding indoor services. More than 226,000 Americans have now died because of COVID-19. Do the right thing so your name doesn't get added to the list. If anyone hearing this message right now and has not voted, turn off your TV and immediately go to the polling place and get in line to vote. The future of our country depends on your vote." That concludes our comments, Madam Mayor, and we are now at consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Consent items are routine and expected to be non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the City Council at once without discussion unless a council member requests for an item to be removed or discussed. Is there a motion on consent?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Chambers.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif. Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Our next item is item number three. We received a request from Royce Esters that was appointed to the Law Enforcement Review Board requesting that you accept his resignation.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Chambers.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Item number four is the appointments to council, I'm sorry, to Law Enforcement Review Board. Those appointments are for Councilperson Galvane and McCoy, and also appointments to the Compton Tax Committee, which is the mayor's appointment.
I'll be ready next week, Mayor.
Okay, we can agendize the same for me.
Thank you.
The entire appointment as well as the taxpayer?
Yes, ma'am.
We are now at City Manager's Report, item number five, which Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you. Mayor, City Council, good evening.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, City Council. Good evening. I'm excited to announce tomorrow we are having a Compton Taxpayer Committee meeting. It will be a Zoom meeting, very similar to our city council meetings. We will go over the history of Measure P expenditures and revenue and talk about plans of moving forward or proposed plans moving forward. We do have a commitment of a quorum for this meeting and looking forward to talking about our Measure P fund.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for being able to organize this meeting. I know it's been difficult to converge calendars, but we do know that this committee is very critical in order to have as much input and just transparency on how Measure P is used and just really to increase understanding amongst the community. So I appreciate you and your team for organizing this most important committee.
Yes, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, item six, I've been in contact with the captain and she would like that to be agendized for next week for the crime stats update.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a statement if you don't mind. Yeah, I spoke with the city captain clerk, had called and spoke with me and she was not going to be here because they were in training for the CAM program that, for the CAM, so the body cams. And so she wanted everybody to know that's why she wasn't here. And right now they are training, so we have a group of police officers that are already going through the training and they should be already fitted for their body cam starting tomorrow. And they are looking to have that complete, that project completed by the end of this month. Well, they will have all the police officers trained and everybody should be in body camps hopefully by the end of this month. And so that's why they were all in training day, so that's why she was not able to make it. She just wanted everybody to know that's why she wasn't here this evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sharif, for that explanation. We appreciate it.
Item number seven is the City Council Meeting Audience Participation Discussion.
If we could, Madam City Clerk, I know I did indicate I would wait until next week, but I would like to actually ensure that someone is a part of the taxpayer committee meeting for tomorrow. So I actually just received confirmation from someone that I had asked. So I would like to make that appointment tonight if I could.
Okay. I'm ready.
I'd like to appoint Christian Reynaga to the taxpayer committee.
Motion, please.
I'll move. I was talking, but I was on mute.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCoy and Councilwoman Sharif. Roll call.
Councilperson Chambers.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes, thank you all.
We're now at item number seven, which is the discussion on audience participation in the council chambers.
Yes. Mayor, Mayor and Council. Ultimately, I would like to bring the item back. We have, we have started surveying council, council meetings in surrounding areas. There are jurisdictions that are holding their council meetings similar to how we are holding it telephone and email as their participation medium. We have some that are using Zoom and some that have a a limited live audience format. Clark and I have discussed how we can open up the chambers, limited to audience comments only, and we have a employee volunteer for the temperature and security to try to minimize costs. So we're working through the various options and I should be able to bring back a decision next week. I want to survey a few more cities. Madam Clerk, would you like to? Is that look saying you like?
Can I say something?
Yeah, I tried to redo things. Should I stop?
Well, well, the look is that I was hoping that we could decide something tonight. And, you know, I really wasn't going to really say anything, but, but I feel compelled to say this. You know, a lot of the comments have included my name and my ability to read or not to read. And I just want to say that I, I can read better than a third grader and I can read better than a fourth grader. But what I can't do and what the difficulties that I have is reading so much hatred. In all of my born years, I've never had to speak like I've had to read. And that bothers my spirit. I don't have a problem with doing my job, but I have a problem with spewing hatred just through the words of others. They're not my words, but they bother my spirit. And so I was really hoping that at some point we can get past the emails and that the people can stop hiding behind the emails and be able to express to you, the council, in their own words. So that's my difficulty. And so I wasn't going to say anything, but my, my spirit is compelled to say at least that much. So that's my difficulty. But whatever way the council decides, I, of course, I will go that route, but you have my difficulties, so.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, just for your exemplary service and for just continuing to uphold a standard of professionalism and service to the Compton community. We do appreciate you and I do recognize, just, just for the benefit of the residents, the aftermath of hearing continual lies is significant and for, more so for the city clerk, I feel for her more than anyone else because she's actually having to verbalize these verbal assaults on people, especially when most of the, most of the, the items discussed, she knows that they're incorrect. And it's just literally fueled by hatred and evil. And so I support any action that would eliminate the city clerk from having to regurgitate this trash and allow these people, if they want to risk their lives, to come into the council chambers and spew hatred. More power to them. But I, for one, will be protecting my family and I will be either in my office, as I usually am, or at home, as I am today, because I have a slight cold and just making sure that I can protect those people in City Hall and those I come in contact with. So I, I'm willing to make a decision today. I think that people, again, if they want to risk their lives to come down here, that's their choice. If we, if there's a preference for Zoom, I support that as well. At the least that would eliminate some of these faux profiles and fake emails from being sent from people that obviously won't be able to show up on some, read these comments. So I'm willing to make a decision today so that we can move forward.
Yes, and, and I understand the concerns raised and I am well aware of the fake emails or the made up names. My only hesitation was late last week. They were reporting a spike in COVID cases that are, you know, taking us back to the summer months. So I, I felt that some of the push to change our situation is, I think there's some in the public that's insensitive to the COVID issue and they're in a rush to get back to normalcy. But if we can, I can put a plan, I can implement a plan that has residents coming in solely for their comment and leaving for the, for the next resident to enter and state their comment. I may have to have one employee sanitizing the podium. But I'm able, I believe I'm able to get security from, without paying overtime from the director.
I would recommend the Zoom option to begin. The whole point is for people to be able to contribute to the meeting. This whole meeting is being conducted on Zoom. So whether or not someone is in the council chambers or whether or not they're tuning in from their cell phone or computer, it, it's the same effect and I would feel more comfortable not unnecessarily exposing staff or Madam City Clerk, who is stationary and must be stationary in the chambers to just a revolving door of people speaking verbally and possibly sharing particulate matter her way unless we're going to install plexiglass and other mechanisms to protect her safety as well and all those employees that may have to service this operation. So I, I would like to start with Zoom first. And if that is insufficient, I'm, I'm open to additional options in the future. But we were limited time, limited resources, limited staff and we already know we're entering into cold and flu season and we've already had the highest new case alert this, the last seven days. We are literally, our whole nation's on alert. So the fact that we have a few people that want to come into the council chambers, I, I'm speechless and I, I'm wondering where their families are or their loved ones that would even allow. I wouldn't let my mother come into a council chambers to speak a comment, not my loved one. So I, I want to be the loved one for those people, even those people that don't care for us. I'm going to love them more enough to let them know that they shouldn't be in these council chambers, especially when the majority of them are high risk. So let's start with Zoom first to protect their safety and everyone else's and then we can go from there.
Madam Mayor. Mr. City Manager, I just want to direct a question to the City Manager. Have, do we have everything set up where we can actually use Zoom so they can call in? Or do we have people that's, that could be available to make sure that happens when they call in?
We have, we're adequately staffed in IT and Channel 36 to pursue that addition to the meetings. I can't report this evening what's involved to do that. I don't know the, the technical issues required, but we will spend, we will spend the week on it and we can, we can roll it out or I can report a date when we can.
Roll it out.
Roll it out, but I, I can go either, either way. I, I think it is persuasive that the city clerk out of all of us is the one required to be in, in the chambers. But I can roll out either plan.
Madam.
Thank you. If, the road and I, I'm sorry, Lita. I was just going to ask him if he could roll out both, both plans if he don't mind so that we could take a look at it. Because I, I honestly, I do understand what Lita's saying because sometimes when, when people are saying things and it's, it can be very difficult and very hard for you to say what they're saying because mainly because sometimes it's maybe geared toward her, maybe geared toward the city manager or even the city council people. So it's very difficult and I understand that. That's why I kept saying that I'll do it themselves. And, you know, they, you know, it's up to them. If you want to come and they feel as though they want to, because honestly, we can't stop them from saying what they want to say, unfortunately. I mean, fortunately, we can't do that because that is their right. But at the same time, I don't think it should be imposed upon the city clerk where she may have to continue to actually, yeah, go through that, go through that and be able to have to read everything that they're saying at this meeting. Let them, if they want to come, let them do it. If they want to do it on the phone, however they want to do it, it's up to them, let them do it. And so this way, her, you know, she's free of all that. Because, you know, sometimes all of us may not like some things that people say, but unfortunately, it's just the way, where it is and that's the way things are. And we may not like it, but it is what it is. And so we have to, that's why I say allow them to do it themselves. If the, if you can, we have an opportunity to roll it out by Zoom or if we have an opportunity to let them come in, however. But like I said, they come in, they have, if you decide to let them come in, they cannot stay. They have to leave. They have to walk through, say what they have to say and leave, and exit the building. And, and that's what, so that is, I, I think we just need to look at both options and, and everything and I'll take a look at it and to see which would be the best option for us to take. But like, you know, if you want to have them to call in, I think what, what it is is that I believe that that's what they want to do is make your audience come in. So that'll make it because like I said, is that I, I do understand how Lita feel. I really do because I wouldn't want to be in her position where I had to continue to say all that. I say a lot of negative stuff that's coming across from somebody else. It's all their words, let them take those words they said themselves. So that's me. That's my position.
We'll, we'll get this. I know council has been very patient. We will move forward throughout, as soon as possible, if, if this.
There's also one recommendation if we can, I'm sure that they'll be signing in if we need to do some contract tracing, but I would also just ask that the city clerk weigh in because this would directly impact her. I know she's not a voting member of the council, but she is a part of the city council. So Madam City Clerk, could you please just let us know your recommendation on how to proceed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What I was speaking with, with the city manager, I think, I think we can allow, I, I don't have a problem with the community coming in and speaking before council. There is a door behind me that I can, while they're, while they're in, in the chambers, I can be, you know, off site. So it doesn't matter. My, my biggest issue is, is that I just don't know that I can continue to read so much hatred. I just, that bothers me and to my core. And, and however you choose to do it, I just do not want to have to read anymore of those type of emails. I, and, and Ms. Sharif trusts me, I can take people talking about me. I've been talked about before. That's not my issue. But my issue is just having to say and read so much hatred. And is, and again, as long as I've lived, I've never spoke like that in all of my years. And so for me to have to continue to read it week after week after week, it's just disturbing my spirit. And so that's, that's where I am. And I'm just asking council, whatever you choose to do, just take emailing and me reading it out of the equation.
Loud and clear, Madam Clerk.
I, I understand. What did you do?
We'll roll something out. It'll be a work in progress and we'll roll something out next week.
Okay.
We'll put, we'll put information on the website and, and the social media and we'll get awareness to, to what we're trying.
Thank you. I, I appreciate all of that.
Thank you.
Mr. City Treasurer would like everyone to know as well is that he's in here with me, so he wants to be protected as well.
We got it.
I hear the birds in my ear. So if I want to keep a friend, I needed to mention that. Mr. City Treasurer, we good? Okay, thank you. Under New Business, item number eight is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Compton declaring, declaring certain city-owned firearms as surplus and authorize the destruction and disposal of the firearms.
So move. Second.
Discussion, Mr. City Manager, could you maybe just give some historical information or benefit of the residents on this item?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. The firearms that we are discussing this evening were in the possession of the Compton Police Department. So they've been owned by the city for some time now. In 2017, the city management took the, instructed the Sheriff's Department to take possession of these firearms. A few months ago, I was contacted by the Compton Station and they indicated that they can no longer store guns for us. We're talking about approximately 160 weapons. And they asked either we provide authority for them to destroy the weapons or we retain possession ourselves and be responsible for their storage. Given those two options, I have proposed to council that we declare the firearms surplus and allow the Sheriff's Department to destroy the firearms. The name and serial numbers of the weapons are attached as Exhibit A. So there is a record of what we are requesting for disposal and it is before council to provide authority to to approve or deny their request.
Thank you. I just have a question in terms of the destruction of the weapons. Will we receive the confirmation that they were actually destroyed? I would hate for a situation where we designate them surplus and then somehow they get lost in, out in the community some kind of way. I mean, I take firearms very seriously and especially the type of weapons that are included in this inventory.
I'm sure we can get an acknowledgement from the Sheriff's Department once it's completed. I share your concern. That's why we prepared the serial number list, communicating regarding the same weapons that we want destroyed. But I would request acknowledgement that they've, once it's completed, that we have some record that it's been completed.
Thank you. Thank you. Definitely, I would like a written confirmation. Any discussion or additional discussion? Thank you. Roll call?
Counselperson Chambers?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number nine is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Compton authorizing the City Manager to accept the bid of Xena USA and establish a purchase order to furnish and deliver lead-free multi jet or positive displacement water meters for fiscal years 2020, 2021, and 2021, 2022 in the amount of $123,150.50.
So move. Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, we have our Water General Manager in our waiting room and he'll come forward at this time to summarize this item for us.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is for our use of our water meters that we need to replace upon occasion for old outdated meters and when new services come into place. We bid this out in 2019 as a three-year contract, but inadvertently, we only awarded it for one year in 2019, 2020. So that's why it's for 2020, 2021, and 2021, 2022 as a two-year contract to do the final two years.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Counsel, I'm sorry. You ready for roll call, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselperson Chambers?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number 10 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Compton authorizing the City Manager to enter to a professional service agreement with and establish a purchase order for 52 Consulting, Inc. to provide on-call slash demand for information systems engineering and systems maintenance services in the amount of $48,000.
So move.
Second. Discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. We know that our IT department had taken a hit last year with losing our, our lead in that department. The 52 Consulting has stepped up to provide us IT consultation and assistance from that time forward. And we're asking if we could continue this arrangement for the rest of the fiscal year, starting October 1 and going through June 30th to the fiscal year.
Thank you for that. Any discussion?
Roll call?
Counselperson Chambers?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number 11 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Compton authorizing the issuance of a purchase order to the Water Replenishment District of Southern California for groundwater production assessment fees for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year in the amount of $2,640,000.
So move. Second.
Discussion, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor and City Council. Mr. Dickinson can listen to my explanation and chime in. We need to supplement it. But the Water Replenishment District, they, they purchase water to refill or recharge the groundwater that we expend. And for that, they charge an assessment fee. It's not a small number. It's $2,640,000. But it allows us to continue our groundwater pumping that we do as the WRD takes recycled water, capture storm drain water and imported water and put it back as groundwater so we can continue pumping. How'd I do, Mr. Dickinson?
You're just good, I can fill it in. So as you remember from our discussion last week on the leasing of water rights, we have, the city has 5,780 acre feet of water rights. And then on average, we're 7,000-ish or so that we produce and sell to our customers. So we have to offset that. And so that's every acre foot that we produce out of the ground, we pay this replenishment assessment. If we don't produce all of that groundwater, then we're buying MWD water, which that was what we awarded purchase order last week. And MWD water is more, about twice as much as our production of groundwater costs. With this replenishment assessment, our ODM cost of groundwater and then any leased water that we lease, and it's still less than what it costs to buy MWD. So if we didn't produce water, we wouldn't be paying the replenishment assessment, but we would be buying higher imported water, higher cost imported water. So still, it's cheaper to produce groundwater. And we have no option but to pay the replenishment assessment. As they're, the WRD is the water master and they're the managers of the groundwater basin.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. And perhaps for future presentations, if we can also include the previous year fee? So just that we can understand the increase. I know that all agencies are having to charge more, but it would just help to know and be able to track.
Will do. I'll put that in the staff report from now on, the previous years and the current years.
Thank you.
Assessment per acre foot.
Thank you. And also I thank you, Mr. City Manager, for your explanation. You were spot on. Any discussion? Roll call?
Counselperson Chambers? Counselperson Chambers? McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
We are now at council comments.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Councilwoman Chambers available for her comments. I will go to Councilwoman McCoy.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few comments. I just want to thank everyone for joining me for my first virtual town hall meeting as well as the drive-through Halloween trick-or-treating, trunk-or-treating, where, you know, we passed out candy bags. We passed out 225 candy bags to families as well as 200 boxes for the movie in the park. I'm sorry, not movie in the park, for the virtual movie that, you know, you could log into on Sunday. We passed out 200 boxes, which, you know, the beginning of it was an art project and then it was a teaching the kids how to make their own popcorn mix. And so that turned out really well. I want to thank all the community partners that helped to make this event a success and as well as the Latino Chamber for partnering with me. And I also want to just adjourn in memory of Victor Ford and Tricia Woods. Tricia Woods is the daughter of former Chamber President Shirley Allen. And I want to adjourn her memory. That is all I have today, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCoy. And I'm sure your event was a great success. I know that traditionally, you all are able to put on wonderful Halloween events at Burrell. It was right in line with what has happened in the past with a cold intent.
Thank you. And also finally, it's, we're still time for those of you who have not voted. Please, please, please go and place your vote. Make your voice heard. Vote before 8:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Forty-five minutes. Councilwoman Sharif?
Oh, thank you, Mayor Brown. They have 45 minutes, approximately 45 minutes and the polls will be closing. And so just to give them a heads up. My upcoming events, December, District 4 would be having a cleanup Saturday, November 14th from 12:00 to 1:00 PM. Along with organizations will help us host a cleanup. These organizations include the Distinguished Men, Target Corporation, HBCU Hub, United Children's Foundation, and Bishop Withers, and Unity Church, and Alpha Phi Alpha. And lastly, Joint Armored Services. The last event was a success and we hope you can all come out and join us again. Chick-fil-A and Jimmy John's gourmet sandwiches will be sponsoring the lunch for us. So hey, you guys want to come out and get lunch, please come by and come. So come be ready to beautify the city, network, and also make sure that you're hungry when you come because we're going to have two great vendors that's hosting the lunch for us. And I have been receiving calls from my district regarding the information on the bonds, Mr. City Manager. And I will be hosting town hall meeting, a Zoom town hall meeting to give, hopefully, where you'll be able to share that information with them because they're in District 4, they're saying that they want to know more information. So I think that would be a good opportunity for you to really just go over that, to share your presentation with them and to go over and to make sure that they have the information they need and so that they can understand what is really going on here. And so we will be looking forward, so we're getting the flyers prepared, the flyers will be going out. And that would be November 18th from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. That's November 18th from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. And so I look forward to joining you and the Sheriff Department on that, on that day. And our next grabbing go giveaway is scheduled for November 20th from 12:00 to 1:00 PM. I would be hosting a food giveaway in collaboration with Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church, Juco Child Development Corporation, and Compton Chamber of Commerce. The driver food giveaway would be located at 400 South Santa Fe. That's there at Bishop Center Church. So we're looking forward to everyone coming out. So hopefully, we can, we're trying to make sure we have extra things for the, for the community because we know that the holiday season is coming. And so we're doing that right before Thanksgiving. So hopefully, we can be able to actually serve quite a bit of food there, which would help the community and during this holiday season. And there we have a movie in the lot. I would be doing that in conjunction with me and Councilwoman McCoy. That is scheduled for November 20th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And that's going to be a Unity Church at 16133 Atlantic Avenue that Bishop Withers oversee, overseer of the Unity Church will host it. And we are going to be hosting this movie in the lot. And so we're going to be getting information out because we don't have so many slots, people. And so we'll be getting that out. So when we get this information out, we'll please ask you, you know, to, I think we'll be joining through Eventbrite. And so they can actually call in and give us the information so we can make sure they are registered, making sure they're on the list. And because we only have just a certain amount of slots that we can have at the movie in the lot. So it's going to be great. I'm looking forward to being there. And I think I'm, yeah, I'm ready. I'm ready to go and watch the election. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sharif. Before I begin, City Manager, did you want to share any updates?
Yes. Counselperson Sharif had mentioned the proposed bond financing. And first, I want to thank all the my audiences that I've been able to present to, have asked great questions. It's probably been one of the better proposed items that we have, you know, this slow unroll to the community and we've gotten just great feedback. The bond team is pushing for a November 17th council meeting a, to present to council. We've also, we're also preparing for, because with the, with the bond, with the bond item also comes with a public hearing or for the public input on what they see the city's needs are and where they prioritize bond funds being spent. And one of the, one of the themes that I keep hearing from the audience is that they would like a say in how these bond funds are spent. So I'm going to be proposing a public hearing that's continued over multiple weeks to give community, employee groups, whoever wants to weigh in on this issue will have ample time to weigh in and have their, have their voice heard. So I just wanted to bring council up to date on that financing item. We've just had multiple audiences from large groups to one-on-one, and everyone has just been really great with their comments. So looking forward to being able to roll the item out to you guys.
Thank you, City Manager. Update. I will, before we begin, I will go directly into COVID-19 updates. Also, I'll share just a quick recap and also a preview of upcoming events. And then I also just talk briefly about the bond and just answer a couple of questions that I've received relating to the interest rates. I actually found a great graphic that shows the history of our nation's interest rates for the capital market that I'd like to share. So I'll share my screen at that time, but I'll get right into it. As of today, the latest, actually, excuse me, yesterday, 8:00 PM, the latest Los Angeles County COVID-19 case rate is currently at 311,745 confirmed cases. There are now 7,097 deaths. In the City of Compton, our case rate is now at 4,560 confirmed COVID-19 cases and 81 COVID-19-related or attributed fatalities. And so we've heard on this evening, every councilperson has echoed, we recognize that we are in a, an uptick on COVID-19 case rates around the entire nation. We are obviously entering into flu season, colder climates is also not good for repelling, actually, our ability to be able to fight the virus in different capacities, as the CDC has indicated. And so it's just really critical that we really uphold health guidelines and also take whatever precautions are within our wheelhouse to be able to protect our families and our communities. And so I just want to also share that the city's COVID-19 testing facility is still operable, and it is open from Sunday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. I highly recommend that we all include regular COVID-19 testing as part of our just self-care and also family care regimen. It's great to go at least every couple of weeks, and our testing facility does not charge. And so you will also receive your results with less than 12 hours is the average that we have received notification on. Also, I'd like to just share that the Compton Food Pantry, although they are winding down and coming to a close, and we just, I'd like to do something special to acknowledge the Compton Chamber of Commerce for just their stellar service and servicing the Compton community from the onset of the pandemic. They have worked tirelessly through their efforts and also in partnership with organizations like Victory Outreach, Unity Christian. Also, Love and Unity has actually been very consistent in volunteering. Then also, just to city staff, management, the whole team that has really worked to make this possible. We never thought going into 2020 that we would be in the midst of a pandemic, but within about two weeks' time, we were able to resurrect a full-blown food pantry to really meet the needs of Compton residents and also focusing on our seniors and veterans. And that being said, the senior veteran and disabled residents, delivery service will still be operable even past the October 31st end date. And so you can still sign up for your weekly deliveries at 310-631-8611 if you need assistance. Also, just want to recommend that we still access our COVID-19 guide. It is updated nearly weekly with new information, and that's available at our city's website, and that's comptoncity.org/COVID19 ASV. Also, moving forward, I know that tonight is election night, and we're all looking forward to finding out the results of tonight's election. But I just believe that this is truly an opportunity for America to understand where we are as a nation and also plot a pathway forward for moving together, excuse me, for moving forward together. Regardless of the outcome, we're going to have to figure out a way to work together to improve the lives of our residents, our families, our communities. And so the work will continue. And we know that while it's great to have a strong, positive, and progressive president in the White House, we will survive either way, but we are definitely hopeful that we'll see some change where we need it. And obviously, there are many other seats on the ballot. And so the most important thing is that everyone exercise their right, their voice to vote. And I hope that we see record-high turnout in the City of Compton, as I'm sure we'll see across the nation. So that's the exciting part for me, is to see more people engaged and also just reading about what's happening and what choices are before all of us. Also, moving forward, I'd like to just recommend that anyone that's interested in the Compton Pledge, please access the city's website, the Compton Pledge's website, and that's comptonpledge.org. Program information is detailed, and we are going to be planning a, just kind of public information Q and A on the pledge once we are almost scheduled to roll out. So want to make sure that everyone has access to the information. Also, newsletters were delivered. Thank you, City Management Team, for, and everyone that contributed to making this, the newsletter a success. It was delivered today to my home. Looks wonderful, full of great information for our residents. So please access your newsletter. We are also pleased that it is fully bilingual. It's a beautiful piece, and it's something that our residents definitely deserve to understand what's happening at City Hall and on their behalf. As I move forward and move on to closing, I do want to address, I look forward to the November 17th council meeting, and I'm really happy about the city manager's strategy to actually open the public hearing and allow for continuous input from residents. So if they miss a council meeting, they can still weigh in, provide their feedback, and really weigh in on how they want their taxes used for this bond, which I think is really critical. Also, I've had questions and seen a few questions from residents wondering, well, given the city's financial standing, we are still thankfully on track to conclude our audits with our current controller, and we'll definitely schedule an update with her as well for the benefit of the residents. But that being said, the, the question was, given the city's current standing, will the city be beholden to really poor or predatory lending type of interest rates for this particular bond? And so as I shared at the onset, when we were considering the strategy at this time, that because of the pandemic, we're actually in a very strong position, because we've seen the lowest interest rates in our capital markets, actually in the nation's history. We are literally at a capital market rate floor, and so our rate will still be relatively strong in comparison to what we would have anticipated at this time without the pandemic. So I know that once this process concludes and we move forward, and we actually go out to sell our bonds, that's when we'll actually have the final interest rate. That's how the process works. However, I can say that we are very mindful and have been prudent to really be conservative with our estimates, but also to move forward in this window of opportunity that we have to draw down these funds without raising taxes and actually being able to access this very low interest rate. And for those that have a question regarding that, our mortgage markets, they follow the capital market trend. So in the same way that for those that have mortgages and they're receiving almost daily demands for a refi, because we're receiving the lowest interest rates possible. I've seen mortgage rates go below 3%, which is really a historic low. I've seen them in the, in the mid or early twos. Well, it's also commensurable in the capital market rate. And so I believe in also sharing a little data. So I'm going to share my screen for those people that need to see to believe, and it'll just be briefly, and then maybe we can add some additional information to our presentations that we're preparing. And I'll just share really quickly. Alrighty. And so as we can see with this graphic, this, this data graph is really strong. It provides information on the treasury yield. It's very detailed. But I'd like to just call attention to where we are here with these interest rates. So in 2020, we literally are at a low. We can see how this market trend line has continued to vacillate with recessions and depressions and other catastrophic calamities over our nation's history. But even at the, you can see here in 2008, when we had really the Great Recession. But we're well below that with our contraction, and so our, our rates are literally at a historic low in the United States of America. So this is really Compton's opportunity to access these funding sources at, again, a record-low rate. So hopefully, that answered a few questions, and I'd like to also just commend the city manager for his diligence and sharing this information with the community. I continually get great feedback from people that usually are not involved in city governance. And so they're accessing these bond presentations on YouTube and also with the city's Facebook page. So I've been tracking where did they get this information from. So want to just commend the team for doing a great job. Councilwoman McCoy, I know you did your town hall, and that went well. I know Councilwoman Chambers has done hers, and I know Councilwoman Sharif is moving forward with hers this month. So we'll continue to make our rounds and provide input, input, and lots of room for a great feedback. But this is truly a great opportunity to address our streets, parks, lights, obsolescence throughout the community without raising taxes. So that is all that I have for you all on this evening. Pray everyone has a beautiful, peaceful evening, and that we wake up tomorrow hopeful and ready to continue our marathon of lifting our great city and also just fortifying our families. So thank you all. It's an honor to serve with you all, and maybe have a-
And I have one more thing, Mayor.
Feel free. Thank you.
Okay. I want to welcome a new business into my district. It's Body by Gigi. She's in on Alondra and Central, right there next to CVS. And I stopped by. It's a great little shop. They have incense. She has t-shirts. She has body soaps, the scented ones. So if you're in the area, stop by. I told her I would announce that she is there, and Body by Gigi. So welcome to the great city of Compton, Third District, and I look forward to doing, you know, great things in, with your business. So thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
Madam Mayor, as you talked about the election, depending on how it turn out tomorrow, I may have to just crawl up and just sleep for a minute.
We're being hopeful. We, we are-
We're hopeful. Yes, yes.
In our hope, looking forward to a brighter day on tomorrow. We are moving forward.
Very hopeful.
Yes. Thank you all so very much, and we will see you all next week.
Okay, okay.
Good night.
Adjourn, I'm sorry.
Oh, so move. Second.
Roll call.
Counselperson McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes, then I saw our treasurer log on momentarily. Did he want to speak?
He's been here. He's good.
Well, I know that he's been here, but his avatar popped up on the Zoom. I didn't know if he was preparing to say something. No, okay, just checking.
You got the adjournments? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you all. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.